Coming up on UGTV. A special session of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas.
...for conference room for an executive session regarding land acquisition. Roll call. McKernan, Mugea.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kane.
Here.
Markley.
Here.
Walters.
Here.
Fieldbrook.
Here.
Bynum.
Here.
Burles.
Here.
Townsend. Albee.
Here.
I'll turn it over to Administrator Bach to start us off.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner, this evening, our first item on the agenda is to talk about the fire station building renovation plan. This is a product of our Joint Labor Management Committee that's been in place for a couple of years, really since we went through the FACET study that the Commission had directed us to work on. That committee has been studying various things from staffing components to looking at buildings. And this presentation this evening is specifically about the building and the buildings themselves, what the future of them is, and what we looked where we feel like we may need to replace, and then those that can be renovated over the coming years. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Chief Kevin Shirley and let him talk about it, introduce his team, and go through the presentation.
Uh, sorry, sir, sorry, sir.
Thank you. Kansas City, Kansas Fire Department. Prior to my retirement in 2014, I'd spent 27 years with the Fire Department. I've held every rank except Assistant Chief in the Fire Department. And it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve the citizens and residents of this city. Many of our fire stations are in dire straits. Over the last 20 years, we have attempted to keep 18 fire stations in good repair. However, as the buildings aged, repair costs have risen, and budgets have gotten tighter. Several of these buildings are quite old. A few of them, we inherited as the city annexed adjacent communities. They all need various levels of improvement. There should have been a comprehensive replacement process started many years ago. The city has faced many budgetary concerns that caused, in my opinion, a hesitation to move forward with replacement plans that would have cost millions of dollars. Unfortunately, those costs only continue to rise. The need for a fire station build and renovation program is not only about providing a safe, functional facility for our firefighters, it's also about our neighborhoods. Fire stations should be and are a source of pride for our neighborhoods. Building new stations and renovating current stations shows the residents that the city understands the importance of our neighborhoods and the role of the neighborhood fire station. I believe we live in a city that deserves a first-class fire department, one that has adequate facilities, equipment, and staffing. I believe we should always see ourselves as a first-class city. I believe that residents of Kansas City, Kansas absolutely deserve the finest fire department in the nation. Our firefighters are our biggest asset. Their health and safety is a top concern. If we can keep them safe and healthy, they continue to provide great service to the residents of our city. Providing a way to clean and decontaminate gear and equipment has been proven to reduce the risk of cancer in first responders. There is a proven link between firefighting and cancer. We can mitigate long-range health effects by providing specialized washing machines called extractors to clean firefighting gear after each usage. We must provide for a second set of firefighting gear in the room to dry and store it. The reduction of risk to our firefighters is a top priority. We've begun addressing this new policy, we have begun addressing this with new policies that call for on-scene decontamination. We have started identifying stations where there is room and infrastructure to install these extractors. The department has started installing new ventilated lockers so our gear can dry quicker. We continue to seek ways to provide each firefighter with a second set of gear. The fire station build and renovation program will help us address these issues by providing the facilities necessary to reduce the exposure to cancer-causing agents. We also need to provide more secure facilities for our firefighters. Our stations need better control of exits and entrances. We need to construct lobby areas that allows visitors to enter, but then restrict them from entering the main body of the fire station until an escort arrives. We need overhead doors that close quickly and automatically. Surveillance cameras, secure parking, and adequate lighting. Storm shelters, gender-neutral facilities, and workout areas are all items that can be addressed as we move forward with building and renovating our fire stations. Other areas of concern will be addressed in the PowerPoint that will be presented at the conclusion of my remarks. The fire station build and renovation program must move forward as rapidly as possible. With the new fire station in Piper area as a springboard, and the remodeling of Fire Station Five in the Northeast, we are moving in the right direction. The Fire Department needs to move forward as quickly as possible, building and renovating the remaining stations. It is encouraging to see the willingness of the Fire Department, IAFF Local 6-4, and the city working together to accomplish these goals. I am confident that progress will be made. Thank you. I'd like to introduce Assistant Chief Jack Andrade, who will be delivering the PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening. My name's Jack Andrade. I'm the Senior Assistant Chief of Logistics. Thank you for allowing us to be here today in front of the Commission to discuss the Fire Department's strategies on fire station building and renovation plan. Chief Shirley and I really do appreciate your time. The last two years, the Fire Department have, has been reviewing the FACET study. We realize that there is good information within this study, and county administration along with union representation and Fire Department management have been reviewing the findings mentioned in this report. There have been several short... There have been several short-term committees and long-term committees formed to improve the deficiencies, and these committees continue to discuss information that is relevant today. We also formed strategic initiative committees to look at various topics. A few of these topics pertain to training, hiring, policies and procedures, fire and emergency operations, and logistics. Logistics included a 10-year replacement plan for all apparatus and a 20-year strategic plan for the infrastructure. This evening, we will be discussing the strategic plan that will govern the fire station's rebuild and renovation program. And just to mention, our stations have a, an average of a 60-year lifespan, so... So as I work through this, as I work through these slides, slide presentations, you'll see three common themes that I'd like to mention. One is the age of the structures, overcrowding, and non-compliance of gender-neutral quarters, NFPA, and ADA compliance. In 2001, we operated similar to how we do today, except for that we added a major component, and that is EMS. When we added that... And 14 ambulances, okay, to an existing 18 structures, where they weren't used to accommodating that many people and, and extra apparatus. So what you'll, you'll notice is you're going to have overcrowding in every station with equipment and supplies. One additional thing that happened that caused overcrowding is the event of 9/11. KCKFD added technical rescue and additional rescue teams because of the terrorism threats that affect us across the nation. This slide here shows where our, our fire stations are currently at today. There's 18 of them. We will be looking at building a 19th station at Leavenworth Road in Hutton, okay? And that, that should start occurring around fall of 2018. Headquarters, one of our oldest stations, is not ADA and NFPA compliant, and it holds a lot of, a lot of apparatus. You know, we've got pumper one, truck one, rescue one. Operations chiefs, battalion chiefs, and it also includes administration, training, fire prevention, and fire investigations. There's a couple of apparatus that I did not mention that we have inside this structure for technical rescue, and also three boats that we store in this building. Station Two is one of our hazmat stations. It, it's not ADA and NFPA compliant. Quint Two and Support Two reside here along with two EMS units and an EMS supervisor. Okay? So these two, and I'll back up one. Headquarters is a station that is classified as one that is built for, to house Fire Department employees, okay? Here in a little bit, I'm going to show you some other stations that, that weren't meant for that, all right? So there, there's two different classifications. One that was built as a true fire station that was going to house individuals every day 24/48, and then there's others that were volunteer fire departments, township fire stations, and you're going to be able to tell the difference once I show it to you. This station here, we want to do mild renovations too, okay? Mild renovations means that we may do some light fixtures, we may paint, you know, we may do some cabinetry work, new carpet, okay? Major renovations means that we're going to gut the whole thing, and we're going to leave the shell, and we're going to rebuild walls, all right? And, and then there's the, another term that I'm going to talk about, and that's rebuild, okay? And, and each station, I'll go through that with you. Station Two is one of those that may need mild renovation, okay? Paint, some electrical work, some small, small items that may need to be redone. Station Three, it's, it's one of our other hazmat stations, okay? It's down in Armendale. It's not ADA compliant or NFPA compliant. Quint Three and EMS Three and Support Three reside here. If you ever visit this station, you, you'll go down there, and it is very tight between the hazmat rig and the EMS rig. We have new lockers down there along with a lot of equipment that hazmat needs to have on standby in case they get a call. Station Four, this is one of the stations that I was talking about. It's a township fire station. It's not ADA compliant nor NFPA compliant. It houses pumper four and EMS four. EMS Four is a cross-staffed unit, okay? This station here is one that I'm going to, we're going to classify as a rebuild. We need to build a new station. It, it houses three firefighters, and it, and it's very tight, okay? If you walk into this station two, you go into the bay, there's not very much room. Chief Shirley mentioned that there's carcinogen initiatives that we're trying to do today, and to try to get this compliant with any standards is very difficult because we can't put any extractors or dryers in there. Station Five, it's on Ninth and Quandero. It, it houses pumper five and two EMS units. One's a reserved unit, okay? A reserved unit is one that, that if one breaks down, we'll jump in this one, and it's ready to go. This one, this station does not have gender-neutral bunk rooms. You go in there, and it's like a room like here, and you've got seven beds in there, okay? That project is, is going to be underway within the next couple of weeks with the bidding process to, to, to get that bedroom taken care of. However, the kitchen appliances, light fixtures, security, are some other items that we need to, to make this fire station more livable. This one's mild, mild, weren't, yeah, correct. It's not one that we're, we're going to remove walls, okay? Once we start removing the walls, and that goes into a major category where we have to, to place these firefighters in a different station to run out of. Station Three is a mild, apologize. Station Six is a mild one. It's one of our newer stations. I've got some pictures at the end. I'm going to show you that this one was built to think to the future. How are we going to house more equipment if we need to? Or if we need to move another pumper into this structure, we'll have enough room. When we place EMS units in it, though, and all the equipment that is needed there, you're going to tell that there's, it's overcrowded. This one is ADA and NFPA compliant, so there's not much that we need to do here, just some paint, you know, maybe some tile work, tub work, bathroom work, so on and so forth. Very minor. Let me back up. We have a training area, okay? We have a 420 firefighter department, and the training classroom can hold about 24. So to do a large matrix classroom event there, it's, it's very difficult, all right? And we do have a tower in the back, okay, as well. Station Seven is at 27th and Strong. It's not ADA and NFPA compliant. Pumper Seven, Truck Seven, and the safety officer reside here. Here, we, we've done some touch-ups on, on this station. When I was there, we, we renovated this station. So as of right now, this station's pretty good to go. The kitchen does need to be remodeled. That's one thing that we did not do. And bathroom work. Station Eight is at 123rd and Leavenworth. It's not ADA compliant, it's not NFPA.
Just call it the pole barn.
Pole barn. Pumper Eight, Tanker Eight, and Brush Truck Eight reside here. We have some concrete work that's going to start within the next couple of months to replace some apparatus bay issues. Here is going to be classified as mild as well. That's class. Oh, I, I'm sorry, I apologize. This one's going to be a rebuild. Okay. How about that? And then I'll...
Take that.
And I'll discuss that. The, the mild portion is, is the concrete work and some paint work to, to make it last a few more years, let's say 10, 12 more years, okay? I will get to that, the timeline of which structure's going to be replaced and when.
You almost gave Mike Kane a heart attack over here.
I apologize. Commissioner.
That's one.
That's one? That's one? Let's go to Station Nine. Station Nine, 11th and Central. It's not ADA and NFPA compliant, and it houses pumper nine, EMS nine, boat nine, but brush truck nine, and a safety officer. Here, we're going to do some mild renovations. We have started those mild renovations last year with window work. We do have to get into the kitchen and into the bathrooms. Station Two is one of, or it's 10, is one of our newest stations. This one's just going to be mild work, mild renovation. This station also is down by KU. I do have some pictures of this too at the, at the end of the slide presentation. You'll notice that it is overcrowded with, with workout equipment and additional gear. Station Eleven's our oldest, okay? This one, I can tell you, if you go into this station, it is the most well-kept station that we have. You'll go in there and be like, why do you guys want to get rid of this one? Okay? And truly, to be honest with you, we really don't, but it is not ADA and NFPA compliant. And so, you know, some recommendations that were made were to give this to our Historical Society, Kansas City, Kansas Fire Department Historical Society, where they place artifacts in there, pictures, gear, and so on and so forth. And I, I believe that's, that's a great idea with this station. So this one, we do plan on rebuilding, okay? Build it in, at a different location. Station 14, built in 1956, it's not ADA and NFPA compliant. We do need to do some mild renovations in this one. Station 15, it opened up in 1987. It houses pumper 15, air rehab 15, and our fire shop, okay? You notice it looks like a pretty big station, but it does have on, on half of it our fire shop, which we plan on moving to 5440 Kansas Avenue as soon as we get that building up and running. We do have overcrowding in, in, in the shop area, you know? They've got gear that they have to have on standby for 420 firefighters, along with fixing every piece of apparatus that we have today. So they've got rotors, they've got extinguishers, they've got MSA packs scattered everywhere, and anybody who would like to, to visit that station, we'd be willing to do that. Station 16 is another township fire station that's going to be rebuilt. It's not ADA compliant and NFPA compliant. Pumper 16 is housed here. You go into this station, you'll see some, I'm going to not say it's overcrowded, but when you go in there, it's very tight. And when we had a, a smaller pumper in there, it was fine to get around, but when, when you start buying these newer pumpers, it won't fit. So this one also has one bathroom, okay, for three individuals. This one, if we were going to make this stretch, we would just do mild renovations in it to make it last a few more years, but we really need to get this rebuilt as soon as possible.
On behalf of former Commissioner Howell Walker, I'd like to mention that's the one known as the gnome house. Always called it the gnome house.
Station 17, it's another township fire station. You know, these, these were meant for volunteers. They'd come running to the station, they'd jump in the pumper and they'd go. It wasn't meant for anybody to live at. So this, this one has one, one bathroom in it for five individuals, okay? So it, it's very difficult, very difficult at times after structure fires. In the middle of the night, you need to use restroom. Somebody's in there, you've got to wait. So we have some issues with this, and we've, we've had it ever since we put EMS units in it. We had to put an EMS unit down in the Turner area, and this is the only place we had that option. Now, the bunk room that it had prior to EMS units only held four. So we had to build two additional rooms out in the bay, okay? So between the bay and the apparatus, there's maybe two feet clearance. It's not very much, it's very tight. Now, it could be a little dangerous at times, having people sleeping in the bay where exhaust fumes could, could build up. We do have primal vents, and sometimes those detach a little bit early, but those fumes stay inside the station. And so this, this one needs immediate attention as well. Station 18, it's not ADA or NFPA compliant. You have a pumper, an EMS unit, a boat, and a brush truck 18, okay? We would do mild renovations in this one. Station 19, it's not ADA compliant, it's not NFPA compliant, and it houses, it, it looks like a big structure. Looks like it's, it's, it's well worth the value there, but, but you have to understand that we share that building with KCKPD, so there, it's the West Patrol Area, so half of that building is theirs, okay? So it, it houses a pumper, an EMS unit, safety officer, brush truck. And we would do mild renovations in this one as well. Station 20, township fire station. We've got a lot of problems with this one, and this one will be the first one that needs to be replaced after the new Piper station is built, okay? We have, we have, the concrete within this station is sinking, so when you go to the restroom, the door won't shut all the way, and if you try to shut it too far, you're not getting out, okay? We've had to, to respond with another pumper there to help get that door open. So this station needs immediate attention. Through the FACET study, they had an independent contractor come in and evaluate each station, and this individual came in and said, you know what? I'm going to classify doing these stations in three categories. One, minor renovations, two, major renovations, and a new construction if you were to build that station from scratch today. And so I encourage you to look over these numbers and understand that for existing structures to rebuild is, is a little bit cheaper today. It costs $250 a square foot to renovate a structure, okay? So to rebuild a new, or to build a brand-new one, it's 200 square, or $200 per square foot, okay? So if you look at an 80 by 80 structure, you're looking at around $2 million that you're going to spend to, to build that structure of an 80 by 80-foot building. Plan moving forward. Listed there are all your fire stations, along with the date and address, and whether they're ADA and NFPA compliant. We categorize this through our Strategic Initiative Committee as demolish, rebuild, remodel, okay? So those terms are a little bit different than what I was suggesting today as mild renovation and major and remodel or, or rebuild, all right? But as you can see, we placed priority on Station Four, Sixteens, Seventeens, and Twenties, and the new Piper station. On that last column is the budget year. If the plan works successfully, and we get the, the new Piper station groundbreaking in fall of 2018, we... fall of 2018, we plan on building the next station around 2020, okay? The new Piper station, we look to break ground in fall of 2018. There's a timeline that needs to be followed, and it is time-consuming. We have to jump through a few hoops, all right? And one is to issue an RFP for architectural firms, and we put that to bid March 29. We'd like to select that individual or that firm by March, or May 7, and have a contract with them by May 25. Then we need to issue an RFQ for construction manager, and we'd like to get that done by June 14, and then break ground in fall 2018. So, here's your timeline. The timeline is, can vary a little. It just depends on how things, how long it takes to build, weather, so on and so forth. There's a span on some of these, one to three years, because we don't know when that new Piper station will be completed, all right? And so, our goal is that every two years, we're starting to build a new station, all right? As we're building new stations, what we'd like to do is continue that remodel process, that mild renovation, to get those buildings stretched out a little bit further. And as we do that, some of those buildings may not need to be built, for example, Station 9 in year 13 to 15. If in year 13 to 15, Station 9 looks great, there's no need to rebuild it. We may push it off until year 22 to 24, if need be. So, we do have, we definitely do have a plan to keep these buildings going forward. And, you know, I appreciate everybody that has participated in the FACET study and in the committee work, because they've been able to help us figure all this out. So, do appreciate it. I have this slide here, carcinogen prevention initiative across the nation. Over the last year, year and a half, maybe even two years, we've been pushing this. It's been a national event where we're trying to figure out ways to prevent cancer within firefighters. And pretty soon, NFPA standards are gonna start changing. As we start building the new Piper station in 2018, in 2019, this standard may change a little bit. And we're gonna try to keep ahead of that for our firefighters. And one thing that we've been doing is new lockers for aeration, so that when our firefighters go on a structure fire, they could have a second set of gear that they jump in, they can wash the first set, hang it up in their locker, okay? It allows them to have two sets of gear, and it also allows them to air dry. Now, air drying bunker gear is, I mean, you could take a wet towel, soak it really good, throw it in the corner, and it ain't gonna dry, all right? And so, even if you hang it up, it's still gonna take time to dry. So, we're also looking at dryers. We're looking at dryers to be in place in each station, so that our firefighters can go into a decon room within that, inside that fire station, get out of that wet nasty fire gear, and throw it in the washer, and then hop into their new gear. And then, before they go home in the morning, hang it up in the dryer. So, we're working on, like Chief Shirley had mentioned, we're working on a second set of bunker gear as we speak. It's very difficult, because to outfit a, all 420 firefighters that we have today is gonna cost close to $900,000, okay? Now, to also add extractors and dryers in each station without installation cost, it's gonna be another $300,000 to $400,000. Okay? So, we're looking at $1 to $1.5 million, just for the equipment alone, all right? And then, as Chief Shirley mentioned, we are developing SOPs to combat reducing the exposure of carcinogens to our firefighters. So, here's Station 10. You notice that there's an EMS unit, the air rehab unit, along with weight equipment, okay? Weighting equipment inside the bay is not ideal. Granted, they can open up the doors and feel a nice, cool breeze come through. However, starting our fire equipment, starting our apparatus inside the bay, eventually that stuff builds up with carcinogens. It's like if you come to a fire station or a structure that you run equipment inside the building, you'll start noticing the walls turn black, okay? Or dingy, and that's the carcinogen buildup. So, here's another station, Station Number 6. As I was explaining to you that we have overcrowding because of the EMS units, this is what occurs when you take out a bay and put two EMS units. You start placing gear lockers next to the exhaust of your brush truck, okay? You got a Gator truck there and a fire department rescue, which has rescue equipment in it. And so, everything's pretty tight when you start walking around. As the weather gets nice, we start moving that stuff around to try to make more room, but it's very, it's very difficult to do that. Now, I'd like to also mention that Station Number 6, we have an MCI trailer that we would love to put inside, because it has medical equipment, some things freeze, all right, that sits outside in the back. We don't have any room at any station for it today, all right? Station 2 is our hazmat station, and you'll notice that some of our, I guess, the lazy boys out there, and it's something, it's something that we have to, if we're truly gonna push the carcinogen issue, is that we can't have this go on in our stations. But this talks to overcrowding. You know, in this station, you've got seven to eight people that live in it, and so, sometimes firefighters need to break away from each other, and there's not really any work to go, all right? This is also that hazma, yes?
It'd be a mild reno if it's that packed and needs that much work. I'm just curious.
Yeah. It's mild in the sense that the living quarters isn't bad. The living quarters isn't bad for, or a pumper, or a quint, and an EMS unit. But when you start adding additional functions to that station, for example, the hazmat unit, which is, it's cross-staffed, but it's an additional unit in there.
So, that sounds like-
Should we think, should we think about our redeployment model and try to negotiate where stuff should be held? For example, the new Piper station. We haven't got that far in the planning process yet. However, we may have to move some things around to make more room in other areas, and that's something that our committee is looking at. Or we'll look at it in the near future.
Thank you. I'm probably jumping the gun, but my brain's just going 90 miles an hour when I'm listening to you guys, and I like one.
No, you're fine. I spoke about a training, our training area at Station 6. It's, in my opinion, it's inadequate for 420 firefighters. We need an area where we can hold more than just one class. And so, the FACET recommendation is to try to figure out a way to get our training facility in a better location, including at Headquarters. Right now, our training staff is in the basement at Headquarters, where Headquarters also staffs as administration, fire prevention, and inspections, so, and investigations. And so, Headquarters, like you said, Commissioner, where are you putting all this stuff? So, we've gotta start thinking of our deployment model, and is there a way to make things more livable? And so, that's all that I have on the presentation, and I open up everything, everybody to ask or encourage everybody to ask questions.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Kane.
Following the FACET study, how are we with manpower following what they told us? Are we, do we have the appropriate manpower for the appropriate amount of equipment we have, or are we shorthanded?
Well, I think right now, we need to move towards 1710 compliance, which is what the FACET study said.
All right, so we're out of compliance right now?
On several pieces of apparatus apps, yes. That is correct.
Okay. Can you go back to the map of where all the fire stations are, please? Mayor, west of 92nd Street, north of Parallel, we pay $15.2 million in taxes. I've been talking about this fire station since I've been here about 12, no, were the fire stations, the actual locations of them, on your map?
Oh, the map? Second slide.
Since I've been here, I've been concerned about this fire station. And unfortunately, October 31st, I took, go back, I took my first ambulance ride. It took 20-some-odd minutes to get me to KU, and they left that whole area open. And if you look at that map, there's one fire station. We voted on it last budget to build a fire station, and now we're being told that they might break ground in the fall. Staff, in my mind, has drug their feet in performing this function that this committee, this commission said, "We want a fire station." And it bothers me, and should bother everyone on the commission, that we voted for something that they've done very little work on. I'm extremely frustrated with the way that is done, especially when you take the one fire station out, which we call the pole barn, and you leave the whole area open, and we don't need just one fire station, we need two. So, I don't think that staff has done what they were supposed to do. We voted on it, and we're just now, we might break ground in the fall. Well, there's not a whole lot of construction going on in the fall. I might work in construction, Phil, I'm not sure. But it, and when I ask about this, "Oh yeah, we're working on it." Well, here's our numbers. When did we vote on the budget? Last August. So, we haven't done, we've done a minimal amount of work since last August to get this done, or I see a minimal amount of work. If I perform my job like this, I'd be fired. I'm extremely frustrated with the way this has been handled, and I want this project moved forward a lot faster. Once they get all the drawings, when they get the construction people to build this, they need to build it as fast as they can and as safe as they can. But I cannot believe something this important that we've done, and we've left ourselves exposed out there for years, we haven't answered, and we haven't done anything to fix it.
Commissioner, I can assure you, the staff has not drugged their feet on the project. I know it's taken longer than you like, it's taken longer than I like to get done. It has been one where we've been, having not done a fire station since 2001, we didn't have expertise in-house to go through what we started to look at, figure out how we wanted to build this, what different things we wanted to incorporate into it. So, we spent extra time doing due diligence in that regard to make sure we're doing this right. As we're looking ahead to a future, many more stations in our community, we consider that there will be many aspects of this station that will be a model that we'll work from, that we'll be able to replicate and move on to the other ones. So, that has played into it as well. And I know we would like to move through this at a much faster pace, but we're working hard to make sure we get it right as we go through it. Clearly, the timing of the land took us a lot longer than we wanted to to get all that closed, and some of that was out of our control, but we moved through that as quickly as we could as well. And I think we ended up with a very good location for this station.
The people in District 5 deserve better than what they've been delivered on this project. And I realize it took a while to get that property going, but I didn't see the staff jumping around going in a hurry to get this done. And now that I've taken an ambulance ride, know how long it takes, and then when some, my neighbor asked me, "Well, who covers us?" When I got back from the hospital, "Who covers us while that ambulance is gone?" And there's several of them, then you leave the other area empty. But nobody's left more open than we are. And I'd like this issue addressed as fast as possible.
You know, I'm gonna go back to the time when we went from the commissioner form of government to the city council form of government, and I can go back that far, because my uncle happened to be elected the first city council member from the 6th district at that time, the Turner area. And I recall a piece in the Kansas City-Kansan at that time, where the newly-elected council members visited the fire stations across the city. And I, excuse me, I remember my, the comment that Ed Alby, my uncle, made when he visited the two stations in the Turner area. He said, "You know, when this was the township," and he had been on the township board, as had my grandfather Leo and his dad, "you know, this was the pride of the township." So, both those townships were built, the first one under my grandfather Leo, and the second one also under my grandfather and my uncle. And what had happened from the time of annexation, and then the change in, the first change in city government, was just a long period of neglect. And I understand why this is necessary. It just seems to me, we're really, I'm just making a comment, and I'm frustrated, because I think what we have to realize is, we cannot repeat the pattern, so that we can't, we can't be 20 years down the road saying we have not put enough money into maintaining or keeping abreast of the technology, the changes that need to be made. It's, I understand, we're a cash-strapped city and county, we all know that. But we have to make the commitment to providing the best quality of service that we can. And some of these facilities, as we go through this process, we have to say, at the same time, we're gonna be ahead of the next curve. We're not gonna get down the road 20 to 30 years and say, "You know what? This is too far gone, we're gonna have to," we're facing, you know, demolish and rebuild. We shouldn't be getting to that point. We have to start thinking about, when we build something, we're also building in the future care of those facilities. And it's the same way with our fire equipment. There's, it doesn't make any sense that we are, I understand why, but we have to start making the commitment to providing the equipment that all of our employees need, all the resources they need, to do the job they need to do, to provide the good quality of life. So, that's not, that's just a comment I wanna make, that as we go through with this, we also have to be looking forward. Where will we be, and what will be, what will we have in reserve to solve the problems that are gonna occur as this equipment ages and as these facilities age?
Yes, Commissioner Bynum?
Mayor, Chief Andrade, in the, and Chief Shirley, in the plan you've put forward, I imagine that we need to stay semi-fluid, I guess, with changes that might have to come around. I can see two places where a combo, I like, I still like the concept of the combo police and fire station, and I can see a couple of opportunities for that kind of construction in your, in your tear-down and rebuild options. The north 80th building itself isn't perfect, but I like the notion of police and fire housed in the same place, and I can see that fitting in on this, potentially on Station 5, which I know you have as a remodel, and I think you're actually starting soon. And then, Station 4 on 81st and 11th Road, those both strike me as places where we have police needs also. And I just wonder if, has that been discussed at all? Has anybody discussed that? I know I have.
I think we've considered that, but I think it would be better if we had a certain plot of land, wherever that is.
Right, not necessarily on those spots.
Not joined so much, I mean-
Right, not necessarily on those spots nearby.
I've had a few problems with, when I was a battalion chief, where I had to go out and fix the plumbing on the police side because they all meshed together and something happened on ours and it was dumping in their, their side and they weren't real happy with that at the time. So there are certain problems with trying to join those two. But a central location is not a bad idea at all. I mean, especially if we could combine it with security, with a possible driving area for everybody to utilize, a possible training area for everybody, that would be a wonderful idea. We haven't got anything planned for that yet.
Thank you.
Commissioner Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor. As I look at the summary of projected cost per location for the FACET study done in two thousand and fifteen, that's the slide that I'm looking at. And I think Chief Androtti, you had mentioned that it is more costly to renovate in many cases than, than for new construction. So what is the thought process? Because I see one, two, three, four, five, six locations where the cost of major renovation exceeds the cost of new construction. Have you all got down the road in terms of trying to figure out how do we address, address that dilemma?
My response to that would be, you're absolutely correct. It's easier for construction companies to come in and, and build from scratch. You're not having to worry about what the other contractor had done prior to. And so that's why the cost per square footage is, is a little bit increased between renovation and building a new building. Sometimes it doesn't make sense to do a mild renovation, which means, and when they, when they say mild renovation, for examples, let's go with Station Number Six, one of our newer stations. When they say mild renovation, they, they don't look at the electrical work in, at Station Six and say, "You know what, it's good, let's take that off the price tag." Okay? What he did was looked at the square footage and said, "If I redo all of this, electrical, plumbing, lighting, tile work, carpet, and I redid everything, it's, it's, it's a square footage price for everything." And at Station Number Six, we wouldn't have to touch plumbing, wouldn't have to touch electrical, we may not even have to do any work in the bathrooms. And so we may just need to replace the carpet and may need a paint job and when we're done. And so these are just estimations on, on square footage and the amount of square footage for those buildings.
If I could, Commissioner, I think the first station I see up there and I go, "Holy cow, nine point two million."
Right.
Okay.
Right.
That is a grand old building that houses almost everything we have.
Right.
So it wouldn't be just one, couple of base stations, it'd be a huge station. And to do that on the site would probably cost that much. And you probably could build a fire station over there for two point six, three point five million, but it couldn't house all of our training, all of our administration, all of the fire prevention and investigations. So I think that may be somewhat misleading because I was the same way when I saw that nine point two million. Why would I even consider that?
There are some nuances in these, in these numbers a little bit there.
Right, right. And then you see the abatements.
Yes.
Where they go in and they go, "Okay, you got lead paint, we have to have specialized people for that, we have asbestos, whatever it is that they find." So I hope that helps you some. I was the same way when I saw.
It helps a bit, I think. And there, half of the, looking at the next slide, half of the fire stations are in excess of sixty year, the sixty year lifespan that you speak of. And I'm looking at some of them, it looks like they're kind of prior, they're either prioritized or they're identified with a budget year. The one, the two in my district have neither, just want to say that. Either a priority or a budget year, although one of them is the thirty first, thirty one hundred State Avenue. And I do like the idea, by the way, of utilizing that for, as a historical site. They're certainly landlocked, you've got one bay there. It's a beautiful building.
Right.
It's a picturesque building, but I don't know how functional it really is in terms of parking and things of that nation. I've never been in, so I don't know that piece. But I guess what I'm looking at is, when you talk about rebuilding, can you talk about the difference between the, the priority basis versus the budget year and how to, how we, how you make sense of all of that?
I'm not sure I understand what it was that you're asking me.
Well, I'll, yes, some of them have priority, you, you, you say that they're prior, let's just look at number four.
Okay.
It's priority and you have it slated in budget year twenty twenty-five. Then there was, as you were talking, going through the listing, you said that these are going, this one, for instance, I'll look at number eight, it's a rebuild. I don't know what the priority is, but we're looking at twenty twenty-seven as the, as the year, the budget year that will address that. Am I looking, am I reading that right?
Commissioner, I might speak to that. What, what I asked them to do as they were going through this was, you know, they went through and looked at which ones need to be replaced. And they built a schedule that's on that other time graph that kind of shows which ones need to happen, but recognizing in the end, they're recommending or requesting years to come into it for a budget cycle. I said, "Give me your highest priorities." Realistically, what I'm looking at is what we can build into our C M I P plan over the next five, seven years. And that's where they went back and said, "Okay, well, these, these five stations really hit that highest priority."
Okay.
And I think through the other one on there is another date just showing how that sequence of cycle could be. So this is really in response to me trying to get the committee to come back with a good, good priority to it. Okay, what's the first one you'd go after, the second one and, and third? Then we have to take that back and build it into an actual budget cycle and find funding to go with it.
And that's.
And that shows where these are. I mean, if you wanted to give them the priority that these gentlemen would like, they'd say, "Let's start all of them next year and start moving." But I got to put that back into reality of what may be practical for us to deal with, and that's building in a capital replacement schedule for buildings that we do not have really built into our cycle for debt at this time and identifying the funding to go with it. So that's where this comes from.
Okay. I'll stop for now. Thank you.
Commissioner Burrows?
Thank you. In looking at your chart, I see that we built eight stations in a ten-year period through the fifties and sixties. And then through the seventies to the first, the two thousands, we built six, seven stations, basically. Do you have a running total as to what the cost would be? Do you have an aggregate number in your final right-hand column on the previous slide? Do you have a total at, at what it would cost to replace those stations? Because I see one point four million repeated. You must have a, a template of a station that, that they are pulling those figures from. It's just, just different sizes for different needs for different stations?
You're talking about the repeated number of one point four million.
Yes.
Through there. Yeah, I mean, that's kind of the template for the station, but it may not in fact be the correct size for that station. Right now, I think FACET's looked at it and said, "Hey, the one point four million." So. Commissioner, what, what, to answer your question, what FACET's did, one of the issues that the firefighters agree with, with the FACET study, and we have some issues with that study, I think as you all well know, one, but one of the things we do agree with is their evaluation of the stations. I think they employed someone, a professional architect to come in and take a look at these. But what they did when they put those numbers on them is they just, they made, they made it uniform. Exactly what you're saying, Commissioner, that you would build that same station in that same place and get that piece of ground for that same piece of money if you had to buy it. That's not realistic. So, so that's, that's one thing that needs to, you know, to be brought out, that those, those figures are what they are. So I hope that answers your question. That one point four million is not reasonable nor realistic at all.
And I appreciate that statement, my, in, in just, I would say there's going to be a fifteen to twenty percent overrun on most of these prices that are here anyway. And what I was looking at was, was trying to get an aggregate number at the bottom. So if this is going to run us twenty-five million to replace these twenty stations hypothetically, how do we divide that out in a budget over a period of, of ten years? And if we put a three million dollar piece in the budget for renovation and/or construction of a new fire station over ten years, then we ought to be able to start chipping away at remedying some of the concerns here that we have and replacing them with a modern new facility. I mean, we have so much new advantage to utilize, lead, lead standards within the fire department and in our buildings within the city. And I agree with the mayor that not only should we build, but we should have money set aside for the maintenance factor of those buildings. We have a tremendous amount of deferred maintenance in city buildings in this community, and it's not just in our community, it's statewide. Budgets have been, have been really tight. But the energy savings alone that we can get from a lead building that is constructed in a uniform manner that is concise to what the fire department needs would be something that we could use to help you reach your, your target prospect of replacing twenty stations.
Yes, Commissioner Gill.
How much are we budgeting for the new fire station in Piper?
Four million.
Is that a, is that going to be a kind of a standard station? Would you say that you could put them in categories? Would that be comparable to what with our existing stations in size and capacity?
You know, I believe you, the station that's going to be built at, at Piper may not fit the template that you wanted to replace Station Four, depending on how big that station needs to be. And so we, as a committee, haven't sat down and said, "We need a ten-base station at Piper or a two-base station." We haven't figured out our deployment model today. However, we do have four million set aside for that station and we're going to try to work with that number. Does that make sense? I mean, for example, if I were to replace Station Seven, for example, it may not be a four million dollar building to build a two-base station, it may be less. But it may not be the same, it may be a similar template, maybe just a scaled-down template of the new station we're building i- at Piper to fit the needs.
I believe we budgeted high on this one with the intent that we would be, if we have money left in it, then we can start to use that if we approve these plans to roll into the next stages of it, whether they be remodels or even next station building. So hopefully we do come in significantly under that for that station. But we put the number in there so we can get going on it.
Yep. I just, I asked a question just because of what Mr. Wing was saying about the one point four million number that keeps being repeated. And I also like Commissioner Kane do a little bit in real estate and construction. And I just don't know how that's even remotely realistic for even a small fire station if you're going to do new construction, even if you own the land.
And I think that's one of the problems, as mentioned before by Bob Wing, that those aren't accurate, probably. I think the four million allows us some flexibility as to the number of bays. Also gives us flexibility too, if we can salvage some money from that to move into fixing something else and/or use that money for the next build. So I think that's, that's quite accurate, you know, that this is not, that's one of the, yeah, it's one of the problems with the study. This is just a study, we look at it with the information and go, "Okay, you gave us that information." But there's other information to be gotten elsewhere from your study or from the IAFF study to look at that and go, "Okay, here we go, this is, this is more accurate now with all of them together."
So the magnitude of the problem, is it fair to say then, the magnitude of the problem financially is much greater than what's indicated?
I, I think, and so if I'm, it seems to me that what the study has done and what you're reporting to us, we're establishing the need, the desperate need frankly, to address the problems of the facilities that are out of date, not in compliance, and that really altering the numbers probably was not a great help to us necessarily. Because until we actually get to the site and what the needs are in that particular service area, we won't know what the cost is. But what we're really trying to say, I think, tonight is, we know what we have to do and this is how we're going to go about it. And this is a rough timeline about how we'll approach it. Is that fairly accurate?
Well, Mayor, if I might, and the, we raised this point in our meeting the other day. What I'm hearing here is, and, and the firefighters are not in total agreement with this timeframe for a replacement of stations. I mean, as, as a committee, I'd make a minority report and say, "We need to, to tighten that up as much as we can." But noting that the, the funding mechanism that's in place today, you know, is that there's, there's a lot of hogs at the trough right now, so to speak. What the firefighters have, have mentioned in the last meeting was, think along the lines of what Kansas City, Missouri did some years ago when they were faced with two lawsuits for female employees who, whose fire department was in the same position we were in with respect to fire stations and inadequate facilities for female employees at the time and employees living in and sleeping in toxic areas. That's what we've heard here. And, and what I suggested to the committee, not any elaborate discussion yet is, and the challenge to all of us, I believe, and the firefighters believe, is going to be to think outside the box and look at what Kansas City, Missouri did with respect to, I mean, they built a bunch of fire stations when, when they pay, after they paid out two lawsuits. You go over there and look at their, their stations now, they, they went to work. But they went to the community and said, "We, we can't do it with the, the present funding mechanism that Commissioner Johnson said is going to place his district and his fire stations out ten years." That's not realistic. What KCMO did in, in their case is, they went to the, the community and said, "Such that this elected body has done before, we got to find another fu- funding mechanism, a sales tax or something specifically for fire stations." Because we are so far behind the pale right now. We'll never catch up. I'll be, I'll, before some of this is said and done, I'll be dead and gone. And you, you, you know, the, the discussion of, of what Chief Androtti said about the, the reality of the cancer of what's going on in these firehouses right now and how it affects the firefighters is very real. You know, what we found now is cancer in firefighters is not just from inhaling the smoke in fire scenes without adequate breathing apparatus, it's from, from contacting and coming through your skin. And that's why firefighters have contracted so many different types of cancers today. That's why there's legislation in, in both the Congress and the State House to take this issue up. That is prevalent in our firehouses today. That's the concern of the firefighters. I think these gentlemen spoke well to replacing the, the stations as, as it relates to what FACET said. But, but when the, when the rubber meets the road here, we've got, what I heard is we have inadequate fire stations for female employees. We have, we have fifteen out of eighteen stations that do not meet code. And we've known about that for three years now and nothing's been done. And we've got firefighters sleeping in toxic rooms, in toxic situations. That, that can't go on much longer. That's, that's another cost, Mayor, that, that if we don't tackle that one, that's going to be on top of the construction costs. So that's, that's been the real discussion and that's, that's going to be my challenge to this committee and, and to the elected officials and to the community, that we're going to find, have to find another funding mechanism to get all this accomplished in the timeframe that it needs to get accomplished. Thank you.
We were just kind of chatting a little bit about what came to our minds was, of course, three of mine are at fifteen or later, so I'm grumping about District Eight. Sorry, guys, just grumping. And so, and I know they're some of the busiest because I get to hear them, you know, go past my place all the time. I'm wondering, do we have the stats, and I'm sure you guys do somewhere, about the number of calls in each of these places, from each of these stations?
I don't have them with me, but yes.
Can you get those, can you get those to us?
Yeah, absolutely. We can get those.
Because it does matter, you know, the harder they work, the more they're, you know, and they have to be able to, to rest and take care of themselves and, you know, it's just one of those signs.
And I think speaking to, speaking to Bob Wings, the more contact you have in a fire, if you're always the ones that run it, you know, you need to take care of that. You need to have a place to clean up, you need to be able to decontaminate yourself and your equipment. Interesting enough, just from two thousand and fifteen, we saw that the midtown area is becoming very, very active. Number 10's fire station is very active up at Rosedale by KU. There are certain areas that are really, really active all the time. So I would certainly welcome the chance to get you those figures if that would help you.
I appreciate that. Still, I have a question, Mayor.
Yes.
It might be for Doug, is, we've raised some money up here before. I think there was a capital campaign to raise money for the new downtown healthy campus where there was supposedly like $12 million that was going to be raised. And I know that there were some people, some foundations in the community that expressed interest. Has there, with public safety being the number one concern for people in our community, has there ever been an initiative to raise private dollars to help assist us with our public safety facilities?
I don't know that we've gone out from private foundations or such to get people to donate.
Toward it.
No, that's never been a major campaign. I mean, there are different grant opportunities that come about through different federal programs.
Do we apply for them?
We will be. I can assure you of that. I don't think, back from the last time we built one, I don't think we received any grant dollars for that.
So do we not have somebody, whoever was talking about the need for a long-term plan to keep up with the maintenance of the buildings, it was Commissioner Johnson. Is there not somebody whose job it is to be looking at things like this and looking for opportunities that are available? Is that not someone's job?
Well, we do. I mean, funding for coming into the actual remodel work and such like that, that's usually not one you get a lot of opportunities to go for. And we've just underfunded it as a government. I mean, it gets, has been cut or other priorities have outweighed it over the years. And it hasn't, our directive has usually been more toward other areas regarding our mill rate.
You mean reducing our mill rate?
So Commissioner, are we allowed to do fundraising as a city? Can we do that? No problem, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so, all righty then. You know. I mean, no tax deduction? Cute. Oh, okay. If I give, huh? Yeah, okay. No, I was just curious because sometimes we're limited to what cities can do. And I didn't want to, like, stick my foot in it, so to speak. But great idea, Commissioner. I'm, you know, why not?
Well, it would seem to me, frankly, that philanthropic community would not fund the basic necessities that a city needs to provide the services to its residents. There might be some things, for instance, the extractors, maybe that would be something. But it would seem to me that building fire stations is going to require commitment of the community to dedicate the funds to solve this problem. That's my sense.
I don't know that you could do a $50 million capital campaign, but I personally feel pretty confident that, and would be more than happy and willing to work on the fire stations in my district. Because I feel pretty good about, that I think people would help with that, given the situation. Especially, and not to you, Mayor, but to our administrator, is I don't think we do a very good job at looking sometimes at opportunities. So as you know, the philanthropic community is incredibly supportive and generous with the University of Kansas Hospital and the Medical Center. You've seen a new $82 million medical education building that was just built. You're seeing a $250 million hospital tower that's being built on close to state line. I think if there is a way, and you've alluded to this already, to articulate to the philanthropic community the importance of those fire stations that are closest to that medical campus and that help with what happens at that medical campus. And the busyness of those stations has increased dramatically. I think that those philanthropists that have given millions of dollars to that investment would want to ensure that that investment continues to be taken care of as it grows. And I think there could be an argument. I don't necessarily think we're going to be able to take all of our fire stations to a foundations and say, hey, would you fund this? But I think if there are fire stations in strategic locations to something that funders value, that they might be more willing to contribute to a cause like that. So I just would like to see maybe staff or whoever be maybe more strategic and creative when it comes to windows of opportunity like that.
I would welcome any ideas and thoughts we'd have to go in that direction to get other resources of funding to come in to pay for our buildings.
And I'll be glad to help with that.
Yes, Commissioner McKeonan?
I apologize for coming in a little late. It looks like you've gone, you went through all of the stations that we have. Here's one thing that I think would help me as we start to plan for how we're going to fund either the renovation or the replacement of these stations. It looks like from the study, there was just some sort of blanket per square foot. It's 50 bucks a square foot if you're going to do minor, and $175 a square foot. I don't do commercial construction, but that seems like that's awfully low for new, commercial-grade construction that's going to be more than four walls and a roof. So is it possible to get, maybe for the top five priorities for renovation or replacement, a sharper pencil? What would it actually take? And get some estimate of what it would take in real-world dollars to either repair this to satisfaction or replace this station? Use those first five, for example, as the guide for then estimating all the rest of the way down or how much we're going to need on an annual or on a semi-annual basis to fund this? Because I just, I think like everybody else has said, I'm pretty, I'm left very satisfied when I look at these numbers because I know they're not a good guide for how much money are we going to need to set aside on an annual basis to do what's necessary to do? So can we take the top four, the top five, and get a sharper pencil on those?
If you do the top four or five, I want you to add something in District 4 there.
Yeah, there are other models that we have. I'm not sure why we put that right-hand column up there for the presentation tonight because we knew that wasn't numbers we had to work with. We have other numbers that we're working with that show ranges of stations in that 2 million to 2 to 4, depending on how many bays you're putting in play. So those are the numbers we're working with. I'm not sure why we have this. Something to throw sticks.
Mister, I mean, to follow up on what you said and to follow up on what Commissioner McGee said, where I was headed with the thinking outside the box funding discussion. I know somewhat what Kansas City, Missouri did. They went to the voters for a sales tax, okay? That may be good, that may not be good. It deserves a discussion. The other piece of the puzzle that I was, and several commissioners and I have had this discussion over a period of years, Commissioner McGee, Commissioner Burrows. There are federal dollars out there for different types of structures in parks, in public grounds that are available that I don't think this community has capitalized on for quite a few years. For example, the one I've always used is, if there's a need for a public building in a park and there's federal funds available for that building on somewhat of a match or total funding, the one, the grants that I've seen over the years would allow a fire station to be attached to that and the government, federal government would pay for that. I've seen those. I've seen them in other cities. Build their fire station in parks or existing public grounds where there's other federal monies, not so much out of the Fire Fund or the Fire Grant Act or specifically for fire stations per se, but for other public buildings where you can attach a fire station to it and you get the federal government to pay for all of it. Those are the things I'm thinking of to be explored by this community to, because I think we have a lot of options here in the community. And I think there are still those availabilities at the federal level with those monies. And if we don't go get it as a community, somebody else is going to go get it. So that's kind of where I was headed to kind of train our thoughts, if you will.
Any other, Mr. Burrows?
I would just state to my fellow commissioners and to the community, price of construction is going up. It's going to get nothing but more expensive as we move forward. And these are issues that are going to cost us, the city and our community, some investment dollars. And the quicker we act on this, the better for us, not only financially, but it sends a message to the community how much we value our public safety. And we need to move forward quickly. Interest rates will be going up, as we well know, borrowing money will not be any cheaper. Construction continues to climb, price of labor will go up. So we need to take some pretty prudent measures in enacting this policy fairly quickly.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Thank you very much. Do we have a motion for executive session to discuss preliminary matters related to the acquisition of real property?
I move that the commission go into executive session until 7:00 PM to discuss confidential matters regarding purchase considerations and property locations related to the acquisition of real property as permitted under the Kansas Open Meetings Act and that staff designated by the county administrator be present to participate in the discussion and to reconvene in open session at 7:00 PM in the commission chamber located on the first floor.
We have a second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, McKeonan?
Aye.
McGee? Johnson?
Aye.
Kane? Markley?
Aye.
Walters? Billbrook?
Aye.
Bynum?
Aye.
Burrows?
Aye.
Motion carries.